You're now live.
All right. Good evening. Thank you all for attending today's meeting of the San Jose City School Board, opening this meeting Wednesday, June 22, 2022. We'll start our meeting with the territorial land acknowledgement. Presenting for us this evening is trustee Medina. I turn the meeting over to you, trustee Medina.
Thank you, President Sheffield. So we acknowledge that San Jose City Schools is on the ancestral and unceded territory and homeland of the Pomo people and of the Coast Bewak people, and honor with gratitude the land itself and the people who have stewarded it throughout the generations. This land acknowledgement calls on us to commit to continuing to learn how to be better stewards of the land we inhabit. By offering this land acknowledgement, we affirm indigenous sovereignty and will work to hold San Jose City Schools more accountable to the needs of the American Indian and the indigenous peoples.
Thank you, trustee Medina. We will continue to honor the past and the present for the future of this land and for our school community with respect and gratitude. All in attendance, if you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We all learned in school that on September 22, 1862, President Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, putting an end to slavery in this country. But what maybe we didn't learn in school, and I didn't learn this until later in life, was that the news of emancipation didn't reach everyone. This important fact wasn't taught in school when I was a kid. As we all know now, especially with the establishment of the federal Juneteenth holiday just last year, it took another two and a half years for the news to finally reach the state of Texas on June 19, 1865. I was recently in Texas, and this was just last month, for a funeral for the passing of my cousin. And so I was in Galveston, and from a church in Galveston, the family made a long, two-hour procession to a little cemetery down a dirt road off the highway near Victoria. There, in a shadeless plot of land, we buried my cousin. At the entrance to the cemetery, there was a placard identifying the site as the community of Cologne, Texas. Aside from the cemetery and the placard, Cologne, Texas doesn't exist anymore. It faded away sometime in the 1930s. So I read the placard. I took a picture. I shared it with my siblings. We all learned that former slaves living along the Gulf between Houston, Galveston, and Corpus Christi established intentional communities like Cologne to provide safety and refuge from lawlessness and violence committed against African Americans during the post-Civil War Reconstruction era following emancipation. My family was a part of the Cologne community, and I did not know this. I did not learn this from my family. I learned it just last month. So when word of emancipation got out in Galveston that slavery had finally ended, which is what we celebrate today as Juneteenth, it isn't the full story. Despite what some state legislatures enact, future generations need to know the full story without leaving out the middle passages. That oppression, racism, white supremacy didn't end on June 19, 1865. As we continue to grapple with race issues in America, the Juneteenth holiday is a reminder for us to pause and appreciate how far the nation has come. If Independence Day on the Fourth of July is a day to reflect on all that our nation got right, Juneteenth is a reminder that we also need to take responsibility to right the things we got wrong. That's the end of my history lesson. I've talked way too long. We will continue with the agenda. Agenda item C3, report of actions taken in closed section. The board voted unanimous in favor of recommendations for student readmission case number 212212. The board voted unanimous in favor of the recommendation for student readmission case number 212203. And the board voted to approve the settlement agreement for OAH case number 202203919. Agenda item C4, items considered in closed session for action in open session, none. C5, statements of abstention. Are there statements of abstention tonight from the board? Seeing none. C6, adjustments to the agenda. Board superintendent, any adjustments? Okay, can we go to public comment for requests for consent items? The F items only for adjustment? Do you have a card? Do we have any members online?
If there are any members of the public attending on Zoom who would like to pull a consent item for public comment later in the meeting, please raise your virtual hand at this time. And there are no hands raised.
Thank you, Medina. We do have a card, a request to pull consent item F5. We'll note that. C7, public comment on non-agenda items. So we're open it up for those in the audience for public comment on non-agenda items. I have two blue cards. If there are other folks in the audience, you could motion. Okay, I will read the names of the blue cards. We have Dave Bardoni, and we have Lanny Lee. We could have Dave come speak at the microphone, and Lonnie.
Good evening, school board. I want to thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you on a matter that I'm very concerned about is the putting school resource officers back into the schools. Again, my name is Dave Bardoni. I was a San Francisco police officer for 26 years, in which the last five and a half, I was a resource officer at Balboa High School. I just wanted to make a point that Balboa High School was a real problem school. It was a minority school. It was mostly African Americans, Hispanic, everybody, and a handful of whites. Bottom line was being a white police officer. I was still able to get a real good rapport with the students there. And there seems to be a feeling around that police officers are intimidating, and I understand that there are some that that's the case. But with the uptick in these school shootings, it's got me very concerned. I've got three relatives that are teachers. One here in Santa Rosa. And, you know, it takes more of a, I'm not throwing any kind of halos around, but to be a dedicated high school resource officer or any, you've got to really get to know your kids. And I turned into more of a counselor, and being able to talk to the kids would come to me more than they were the deans because they knew I was like a middle of the road. I wasn't threatening. They knew I was not out there to arrest people. That was the last thing I wanted to do. I had to on a few occasions. But we turned Balboa between myself, the school principal, the dean, it was a whole team. You need a whole team. Everybody's got to be on board, and Balboa was like a perfect example of everybody on board, and we all worked together, talked together. And we were able to turn that school around pretty much. This is a school that was so out of control even when I was in high school.
Thank you, sir. Your two-minute time limit has been reached.
Thank you, Mr. Bardoni.
Oh, I got two minutes left. Oh, okay. Okay, I gave him something.
And if we could have Lanny Lee.
Could I give you pamphlets here?
Yes.
Of, it's a listing of all the school shootings, which was compiled, and from, believe it or not, all the way from 1753.
Thank you, Mr. Bardoni.
Thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it. Have a great night.
And Lanny, Lanny Lee?
Thank you. Hello, I'm Lonnie Lee.
Lonnie Lee.
I am a parent of a fourth-grade student at the Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts, and I'm also a licensed somatic psychotherapist here in Santa Rosa. Actually, if you're willing, I'd like to invite you to tune into your bodies for a moment and notice your breath, your body. Notice how it feels to be you in this moment. Now, remember, two years ago, when you first heard of the coronavirus pandemic, what happens in your body when you remember hearing that everything is shutting down? We can't go anywhere. We can't leave our houses. We can't even do any unnecessary errands. Now, fast forward, we've come a long way since then. Now, we're starting to gather again with each other. We're starting to have masks be optional in many locations. However, our nervous systems have still been impacted by the past two years. Now, I want you to, if you're willing, look around this room. Notice how much space there is in this room. How do you feel with this many people around? It's fairly comfortable. I'd like you to imagine now that the entire stage is full of row after row after row of desks. All of the chairs in this auditorium are full of people. Now notice how you feel in your bodies. This is not the same experience as that would have been prior to the pandemic. Now, this, now add even more to this. Imagine that the person next to you coughs or sneezes.
Thank you, ma'am. Your two-minute time limit has been reached.
I'm concerned with maximizing class sizes. Our nervous systems are not the same as two years ago. Thank you for considering that in your decision-making.
Thank you, Lonnie. Do we have members joining us online who wish to speak on non-agenda items?
If there are any members of the public who would like to make a comment on a non-agenda item at this time, please raise your virtual hand on Zoom. And we have one hand raised from Katie and Justin Barr.
Hello, members of the board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Katie Barr, and like Lonnie, I have a fourth grader at Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts. I am hoping that you can give us a follow-up to the meeting that we had last week regarding class sizes for the fourth and fifth grade at Charter School for the Arts. We've been told that there will be combo classes possible on the site with fourth and fifth graders. Until Lonnie's point, the class sizes are enormous. Thirty, thirty-two kids, I think, was what we were told. And, and we were also speaking last week about the class structure and the fact that our classrooms onsite at the School for the Arts cannot accommodate 32 kids or 32 desks. So I just, I yield my time to, to ask you, what is the update on that piece? Have you taken another look at the budget to see if we can accommodate another fifth-grade teacher so that we can have two fourth-grade classes and two fifth-grade classes and more reasonable sizes? And, and how do you plan on keeping the parents of these students informed of the decision-making prior to next school year? I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie and Justin.
And do we have?
And our next speaker is Jess. Jess, could you please state your last name for the record?
Hi there. My name is Jess Lee Howe. I am a parent from the art school as well. I'm also on the Parent Advisory Board, and I'm just asking for some transparency. Our budget was voted on back in March, and the decision about combining classes wasn't announced until much later, past the point of us being able to help, fundraise, or come up with secondary options. Now we're six weeks from school starting again, and the teachers are mainly asking for transparency who still don't know what to expect. And they have some serious concerns about being able to actually fit that amount of students in their classrooms and the, the amount of desks that are required to do that, how much space is left once you do that, the safety concerns around that. And that question was just kind of skated over in our forum and not answered. And so we're just asking for transparency and a follow-up or an announcement of when the next forum will be so that our parents continue to be updated and, and our teachers feel valued and that their concerns are being addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you, Jess.
And our next speaker is Jessica, and I apologize if I pronounce your last name wrong, Triar Wheeler.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, yeah, you said it right. I too am a parent of a fourth grader, a soon-to-be fourth grader at Charter School for the Arts. And as everyone else spoke, I too am very worried about these combined classes for multiple reasons for our students not getting the educational needs that they have and they need, to our teachers not being able to teach in the way that they, you know, are comfortable, and two, about the, about the class sizes being too packed. I don't want to have a classroom of 32 to 34 students so that, you know, for one, it's a hazard, a health hazard. For two, what Lonnie talked about with COVID, you know, being in a small room or being in a room with a bunch of students doesn't feel very safe. And like Katie mentioned, I would like to hear what, what the response is. When do you think we'll, we'll be getting information about this decision? It doesn't feel fair that it was made when we didn't really have much room to speak in March, and then we're just now hearing about it. So I too yield my time to, to hear what you and what everyone has to say about when we will hear an answer about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. And there are no other hands raised at this time.
Thank you, Medina. And thank you for those who spoke with your issues and concerns. We are moving on to agenda item C8, Student Board Member Loyalty Oath of Office. I have the honor tonight to swear in Julie, our new student board member. So let's see how we can do this. Maybe I can work my way over here, and I'll have you stand up so I can swear you in. And you raise your right hand. And then you'll repeat after me, okay, and I'll, so you have a microphone too. Okay, so, and so repeat after me, I.
Hi.
Say your name.
Julie Booy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
I know everyone smiles at that one. Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge these duties.
Discharge the duties, these duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. You are now sworn in as a board member. We actually had Julie at our last meeting, and she sat in and actually did, started the board meeting with the land acknowledgement, but now we have her official capacity. So thank you and welcome, Julie. All right, we are moving on to our D items. Our reports. We'll start first with California School Employee Association reports. If we have Mary Lehman in the audience?
President Sheffield, there will be no CSEA report this evening.
All right, SRTA. Do we have Catherine Howell? Hello, Catherine. Welcome.
Yeah. Good evening, President Sheffield, Superintendent Trenell, and members of the board. I'm Catherine Howell, president of Santa Rosa Teachers Association, representing about 850 teachers in Santa Rosa. Not much of a report tonight, just to say it's pretty much one year of my presidency at this point. A lot of learning went on in the last year, and it was a really hard year for everyone involved in just in terms of exhaustion. Our teachers are depleted. There's a lot of teachers doing summer school, just tired. And so we're just hoping that our teachers can get some rest over the summer. I'm glad to see that, I guess glad isn't a great word, but glad to see that you retained the COVID-19 coordinator position for next year. Hopefully, he will have very little to do. But it's good that, that we still have one. We saw a huge number of resignations and retirements. Again, our teachers are depleted. So hopefully, we can get some hiring done. I will point out that the salary placement policy of 2019 has still not been changed. So anyone hired this month or next month that has served in the Peace Corps or served in the military, will get two years of service credit that anyone in the district hired before 2019 does not receive. So we are still asking the board and this administration to work on that inequity to solve that problem and make it right for those teachers. And I guess, no, I didn't write anything down, and I forgot what else I was going to say, so I guess that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, President Howell. And yes, teachers, long, take a long, long rest if you can. Well-deserved. Rest up because we need, we need you back in the fall. All right. D3 Superintendent Report. Superintendent Trenell, do we have a report from you?
Yes. Thank you, Board President Sheffield, members of the board, those in person and online. As I approach my 365th day as superintendent next week, I want to take a moment to pause and share how honored I continue to feel serving as superintendent. I find joy every day through the people I see working so hard for our students and families, through the faces of the youth that we serve, through the eyes of our parents and families who want to connect with us to care for their children, and through this opportunity as superintendent to do what it takes so that our students thrive. I have tried to demonstrate that this role as superintendent does not shut off at 5:00 PM or even on the weekends. This is a seven-day-a-week, 24-hour-a-day responsibility. My family reminds me that they exist too, and so I try to give them a little of my time also. Being student-centered is a team effort. It takes a balanced relationship with students, staff, families, the board, and the community in order to be successful. I continue to encourage open lines of communication in order to be thought partners and to be solutions-minded. As I shared in my superintendent's entry plan, I believe trust. I believe and trust in the collective energy and positivity of our community to empower our youth. I wish everyone a great summer, and I look forward to serving you in 2223, along with our team who will be ready. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Superintendent Trenell. We are moving on to D4, Board President Report. I will hold off. No report tonight. Board Member Reports, D5. I see trustee Fong's hand raised.
Just a quick reminder that we voted a few meetings ago to remove the plaques Native Sons of the Golden West, and they were on four of our schools. So trustee McCormick and I were lucky enough to be able to get to go to French American Charter School where they were installing the peace poles. And the peace poles are from Veterans for Peace and also for the Santa Rosa Rotary, different clubs, East, West, and Downtown, and others who are paying for these installation of these poles. And these peace poles say, May Peace Prevail on Earth, in as many languages as, or eight languages per pole. So Santa Rosa French American Charter School had so many languages, they put in two poles, which their parents raised money for the second one. And I will say, the juxtaposition of having the quick removal by our maintenance department, thank you, folks, for removing those plaques and putting up these peace poles was a very, very powerful message about how we center our kids and how we stand for peace and equity and inclusion. So thank you to everybody involved in that and to the board for the plaque decision and peace pole. To the Rotary and Veterans for Peace.
Thank you, trustee Fong. Other board members. Do we have reports from other board members? All right, seeing no hands raised. Do we have a CSBA report tonight? All right, no report. So we are going to move on, for those following along, to our E items, our discussion action items. Tonight, it's Action Pact. We'll go in all action. We'll start with E1, action item, Public Board Meeting Via Tele Conference per AB 361. The board will consider the continuance of conducting public meetings virtually, including the use of hybrid, of a hybrid model as allowed in Assembly Bill AB 361. Turn it over to Superintendent Trenell.
Thank you, Board President Sheffield, members of the board, those of us in person and online. We are bringing forward this item to every board meeting to sure, to ensure that we stay in compliance in offering a virtual option as a part of our board meetings. So I present to you this continued consideration from the board as an action item to continue to offer the hybrid option. Just as a side note, we are projected to start returning permanently to city chambers at the July 27 board meeting, which we will still be able to offer a hybrid option should the board choose to continue to offer it. With that, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Trenell. Board, this is an action item. Do we have questions? Questions from the board? Okay, hold that motion because we're going to go to public comment. If there are no questions from other board members, okay, we will go to public comment on agenda item E1. We have members of the audience. I do not see blue cards. We have members online, virtually. We'll, we'll, we'll take the comments from them.
If there are any members of the public who would like to comment on Zoom on item E1, Public Board Meetings Via Tele Conference per AB 361, please raise your virtual hand at this time. And our first speaker is Ms. Margaret Boone.
Good evening. I just had a short comment. I just want to say I love the hybrid meetings, and I hope that we keep them forever. They're so much more convenient, you know, when you've worked all day or if you have to cook dinner, or if you have kids, or if you have meetings, you have to get to doctor's appointments. You can be in the car wherever. It's just amazing, and I love them so much. Please keep them forever. Thank you.
And there are no other hands raised at this time.
All right, now we're getting back to the board.
That was so.
Bring it back to the board. Okay, we have a question from
So do we have to do this every single time after it sunsets to keep the hybrid model? I mean, the bill sunsets in 2024, I think, right?
Correct. The bill sunsets in 2024. I think we'll be looking for any kinds of legislation that would allow for, but I know that there are many industries that already offered a hybrid before this was even a thing. So I think the board could continue to choose that option if you wanted to.
Are there questions from the board? Okay, Trustee Fong.
I'm wondering why we cannot put this at the end of the act, end of the agenda versus the very first thing because the very first thing I would love to talk about teaching and learning. A question.
Obedit, yes. Okay.
Like that. I'd like to renew my motion to continue conducting public meetings virtually, including the use of a hybrid model.
All right, moved by Trustee De La Cruz, seconded by Trustee Flores. We are ready for vote.
Director Bowie. Aye. Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Fong. Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item E two, action item, adoption of Santa Rosa City School Budget for the 202223 school year. The board will consider approval of resolution 202122063 for the adoption of the combined elementary and high school district budgets and to adopt the district's 202223 budget that includes the statement of reasons for excess reserves with the understanding that the reservations may be necessary once the 2223 state budget is signed by the governor. Okay. All right, I'm going to turn the agenda, the, the, the item E two over to, to Superintendent Trinell.
I don't believe Mr. Edson is online. I'm just double checking. No, okay. So, Board President Sheffield, members of the board, those in person and online, we bring forward to you an action item regarding our adoption of the Santa Rosa City Schools budget for the 2223 school year. I'm going to hand it over to Joel, who is going to discuss one change to the LCAP as it was presented previously on June 8. And I'm, Joel, when you're done, please hand it back to me.
Welcome, Joel.
So tonight, we reached the point in our annual budget cycle of adopting the budget. All two weeks ago, we bought, derived the proposed budget in the public hearing.
You can't really hear.
Based on assumptions in the May revision. So what has happened since then? The legislature has passed the state budget under the governor's signature that was done on June 13. And we were hoping to hear more information that came out of the budget that we could use to update our assumptions. However, we don't have much new information in that. Fortunately, we do have is something that we are going to propose this budget with the attendance scenario that had used this in 2023, the district's previous prior happen. And strong support from the legislature and the government and at the June 8.
Just speak closer to it.
At the June 8 meeting, we included a scenario that in 2122 we would use what was included in the May revision of the attendance yield from 201920. Has less support from the legislature. We have not included that in our proposed budget. So that is one up, that is the significant, that is the only material update from the public hearing. So with that, our revenues, since the state budget is 80%, over 80% of our revenues, we need to monitor that budget and, and, and finalize those numbers. That leaves our expenditures with those revenues of requiring in the third year fiscal stabilization of a little over 2 million. That meets our requirement in the budget of, of finding a 3% reserve in the third year. And the next step will be the governor will sign the budget into law by July 1. We've got School Services California on July 14 will issue a workshop that'll give us all the updated information and final information that will go into the budget and we will come back with the required 45 day budget update. We're required to update what the final budget law will, how it will impact our revenues expenditures within 45 days after the governor signs the budget that will be around July 1. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Superintendent Trinell.
Thank you, Executive Director Dantos.
Thank you, Board President Sheffield. And with that, with the adjustment that Joel has mentioned, we present to you the LCAP for 2223 for the board's consideration tonight.
All right, agenda item E two, this is an action item. Board members, do we have questions? Questions from the board, okay. The public comment, we will turn it over to members in the virtual world who have comments on agenda item E two.
If there are any members of the public on Zoom who would like to comment on agenda.
I know it too, I knew it too.
If there are any members of the public on Zoom who would like to comment on item E two, adoption of Santa Rosa City Schools budget for the 202223 school year, please raise your virtual hand at this time. And we have one hand raised from Katie and Justin Barr.
Hi there. This is a question, so less of a comment. I hope that you will actually respond to. But I'm just curious if this adoption of the LCAP budget closes the conversation on the Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts teacher. Okay, I see Superintendent Trinell shaking her head. Thank you. That is just all I want to confirm because I've got a lot of parents that are going to ask me that. So thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
And there are no other hands raised at this time.
All right, thank you. Just a reminder, public comment on items, it's not a Q and A. Unfortunately, this is just the way that the, the rules are written for us. There are comments on the item. We cannot respond. Bringing it back to the board for further discussion, questions or a motion. Board members.
I just want to say thank you for doing this and bringing this over. I did notice that you guys have done something that I have asked for a while, which is to certify in the different budgets right into or expenditures in terms of certify management certified and certificated. I just want to say thank you. It doesn't go unnoticed. One more thing I would like to ask, and I think I've asked this before, is to also include past years' actuals and proposed budgets to give us a reference that we can look as school board members. Okay, so I think this is the third time I've asked for these numbers for budget. It takes me a lot of time to research and pull that information out. So it'll be very nice to have that in here. Thank you.
Questions from other board members? All right. Is there a motion?
Second.
All right. All right, this is significant. We have a motion from Trustee Fong, a second from Trustee Flores. We are ready for a vote.
Director Bowie, aye. Director Fong. Director Flores. Director De La Cruz. Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dantos. All right, we are moving on to agenda item E three, action item, approval of San Rosa City Schools LCAP. Following the public hearing conducted on June 8, tonight, the board will consider the adoption of the San Rosa City Schools LCAP for the 202223 school year. Presenting this agenda item, we have Superintendent Trinell and team. I will turn it over to you, Superintendent Trinell.
Thank you. And this is the LCAP item that I was referring to last time was the school's budget, my apology. And we do have Mr. Mazera joining us in case there are questions. As was mentioned, we have presented information to the board on June 8 as appropriately necessary for public, for a public hearing. And tonight, we bring forward an action item of the 2223 and ongoing LCAP for Santa Rosa City Schools. At this time, we've made no adjustments to the initial report to the board and to the public. And so therefore, I hand it back to you, President Sheffield, for any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you. Questions from the board? All right, I can see no questions. Let's open it up for public comment.
If there are any members of the public attending on Zoom who would like to comment on item E three, approval of Santa Rosa City Schools LCAP, please raise your virtual hand at this time. And there are no hands raised.
All right, bringing it back to the board for further discussion, questions or a motion. Yes, continue.
Of course. Just to help me understand here, when I was reading the LCAP, I mean, there was a section in the LCAP for reintegrating students who for some reason or another were, you know, incarcerated. And, and it looks like there weren't any sort of budgetary items or a reintegration policy added to the LCAP. Is there a reason why we didn't do any of that? Trying to look for that, for that. I'm looking for it. It's, yes, it's only 149 pages long. So yes. So that's something that I was looking at earlier today. Well, there, let me see here, maybe it was under the federal amendment. It was here, this one. So I usually do put the pages here in my notes, but I didn't. It was something that just stuck to me. Oh, this is the Spanish version. It's under the LCAP federal addendum. And towards the end, it talks about different expenditures for students who were for one, for one reason or another institution, institutionalized or I'm looking for it. Yeah, it's towards the end of that. Oh, here we go. It's part D, title one. It says provide description of formal agreements regarding a program to be assisted between the LEA or any correctional facilities, alternative educational schools, services of children and youth involved in, in the juvenile justice system. So I see that a lot of NAs in here for all this section, right? And, and a lot of this talks about, you know, workforce partnership and family involvement. And I just want to see if it's, if there's a reason why we don't have that page 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19. Okay, thank you. Under the federal addendum. Are those being addressed somewhere else? Right. Title.
Steve, do you have any initial data or information on why these are all NAs?
There we go. No, I don't. We, when I was in supervising the state entitled programs, we were under the impression we did not have to fill that section in since we don't operate those programs from the county office. Those could be, could be a reference to the County Office of Education that does the institutional programs, you know, the juvenile justice and the probationary programs. So I think this could be a template that's simply used for those programs. Our interaction, of course, is to serve students in that program less than 20 days. If you're in a correctional facility, once it goes more than 20 days, then you become the responsibility of the County Office of Education. So that, that's what I read this and why we don't have to fill it in.
Maybe because I do spend a lot of time reading these. So maybe just a little background information as to why we don't have to complete those sections. That will be helpful as, as we go. That's, all right, thank you.
Other board members, questions? Okay. We'll open it up for public comment. Actually, we're bringing it back. We're having, we're having further discussion, questions or a motion.
I want to make a motion to.
Do we have a second? All right, moved by Trustee Fong, seconded by Trustee De La Cruz. We are ready for a vote.
Director Bowie. Director Fong. Aye. Director De La Cruz. Director Flores. Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Executive Director Mazera. Thank you, Superintendent Trinell. Moving on to our next agenda item. E four, action item approver, approval of Caesar Chavez Language Academy LCAP. The board will consider the adoption of Caesar Chavez Language Academy LCAP for the 202223 year. Presenting this agenda item, we have, well, we have Superintendent Trinell. I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you, Board President Sheffield. And if we can bring, thank you very much, Principal Gage over. Want to just acknowledge her dedication to see this item through. As with the Santa Rosa City Schools LCAP, there were no adjustments made from the June 8 meeting regarding CCLAs LCAP. So we present the LCAP to the board tonight for your action consideration. And if there are questions, I appreciate Principal Gage being here to address and assist with that if possible.
Welcome, Principal Gage. Board members, do we have questions? All right, well, I'm seeing none. Let's go to public comment.
If there are any members of the public on Zoom who would like to comment on item E four, approval of Caesar Chavez Language Academy LCAP, please raise your virtual hand at this time. And there are no hands raised.
All right, back to the board for further discussion, questions or a motion. I see Trustee Fong.
I had a question, probably should have asked this a long time ago. I know that in LCFF, we get supplementary and concentration funds. How does that work with a charter, especially K six and seven, eight charter?
Charter schools, LCFF funding is the same amounts as non-charter schools. The only real difference is charter schools get funded off of current year ADA only, where district schools get prior year or current year, hold harmless. But the, the concentration grant, the LCFF base amounts and supplemental amounts are the same for their student data as far as undidicated student, undidicated people accounts for the LCAP funding.
So follow up question is.
So follow-up question is. Usually we're K6, what happens when we're now K8? Are we classified K8 and have we moved from concentration to supplementary?
Technology.
So. Charter schools and non-charter schools get supplemental funding per undupiated pupil count student that they have. If their undupiated pupil count is above 55% ratio to enrollment, then they also get concentration grant month funding. So, for example, CCLA has above a 55% ratio, so they get concentration grant funding. Our elementary school districts have above a 55% ratio, so they get concentration funding. Our high school district, arts charter, French charter, and accelerated charter, all, I believe, have below a 55% undupicated pupil count to enrollment ratio, so they do not get concentration grant funding.
Gotcha, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Don't leave yet, Joel, hold up. Don't go far.
If you don't want me to leave, I won't, I promise.
All right, so.
I'm going to make a motion to approve. Second.
Moved by Trustee Fong, seconded by Trustee De La Cruz. Ready for vote?
Director Bowie. Aye. Director Fong. Director De La Cruz. Director Flores. Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye. Agenda item E4 passes. Moving on to E5, approval of Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter LCAP. The board will consider adoption of Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter LCAP for 2022-23 year. Back to you Superintendent Trunell.
Thank you, Board President Sheffield, members of the board, people in person and online. Tonight, just as we have presented other LCAPs this evening, the same is true for Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter. I believe Principal Schluter is here, so if we can make sure she's here. Sorry, I'm not looking at the screen. Hello there, thank you for joining us.
Hi.
So. We have made no adjustments to the Accelerated Charter LCAP. It stands as presented on June 8th. And given that, we ask the boards for consideration tonight to approve the Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School LCAP. And I will hand it back to you, President Sheffield.
Thank you. Board members, do we have questions on agenda item E5? All right, seeing none, let's open it up for public comment. No blue cards, but we might have members of the virtual world.
If there are any members of the public on Zoom who would like to comment on item E5, approval of Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School LCAP, please raise your virtual hand at this time. And there are no hands raised.
All right, back to the board for further discussion, questions or a motion.
Like to make a motion to approve the Santa Rosa Charter, Accelerated Charter School LCAP.
Moved by Trustee Fong, seconded by Trustee Flores. We are ready for a vote.
Director Bowie. Aye. Director Fong. Director Flores. Director De La Cruz. Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
And item E6, approval of Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts LCAP. The board will consider the adoption of Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts LCAP for 2022-23. Superintendent Trunell.
Thank you very much, and I don't believe Ms. Vogel was able to join us this evening. So co-presenting, in case there's a need, Steve and Joel. And in, don't want to violate the Brown Act by responding to public comment, so I will be careful. There are no adjustments to the Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts LCAP. However, these documents are flexible. And so as we have heard, some questions and concerns from families related to some class sizes and the potential of a combo class or more. We are doing research this week. We did hold a community forum last week and heard from several families on helping us to think about how to approach the issue. I did ask at that time if we could have this week to do some of that research, as the majority of my team was involved with interviews last week. So I hope to be able to present some information soon at the conclusion of this week, potentially the early next week, to our families related to what we've learned and potentially what we can do. For compliance purposes, it is necessary that the board considers action on the LCAP as it was presented, with the potential of adjustments, if necessary, that we could bring back to the board. But we do need to follow the law in the consecutive meeting, following a board meeting for the board to take action. And with that, I will hand it back to you, President Sheffield. Oh, sorry, Steve.
Thank you, Superintendent Trunell. I wanted to just come back to an item that was brought up at that meeting for this charter arts. There was a document that we shared that was a year-old document. It showed a duplication of services and some EL specialists. And I've clarified and validated that in this document, there is not a doubling up. And that was a clear question from one of the teachers at the school. So just to reiterate, this year's document does not show a doubling up of positions.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Mazera. Board members, do we have questions? Look, we have Trustee Flores.
Thank you, Superintendent Trunell, because you answered quite a few of my questions. Just for clarification purposes, by approving the LCAP, we're not set in stone as to, in terms of classes, combos, or any of that sort, right? By approving this LCAP.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Yes, Trustee Bowie.
I was wondering, did you guys know when that would be confirmed with the class sizes and the combos?
Two, two thoughts around that. One, we're hiring potentially a new principal. So we'll want to be sure that we bring that person into the conversation very soon, so that they and us, we together, can make some decisions about that. I know that Principal Vogel had indicated to families that class lists and things would be ready by the beginning of August. Obviously, we would want to make a decision about this before then, especially if it includes the need to hire an additional staff person. So I would say within the next week, following our research this week. Great question.
Trustee De La Cruz, yes.
Thank you, Julie, for that question. There, there are a number of other school sites that also have combo classes. Is this going to review kind of district-wide, the use of combo classes, their effectiveness in reaching kids at, and, you know, at grade levels? Also, the class sizes across the district, or is this only going to be a question that's directed at the church?
Thank you for that. So we've actually done multiple iterations of FTE allocation at the school sites based on projected enrollment. And with that, we have tried every which way we could to minimize combos. There are a couple of sites, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, my team, but I believe there are a couple of sites that actually the teachers have chosen to do combo classes, because then they could pair up and, and teach subjects in a different way. And that, that would be more of an equitable way to serve students by giving them that concentrated time with a sharing of a team. So I think some of this has been site decided and based on their site and what they understand about the needs and what families are interested in. But we are trying to minimize it every way that we can, understanding that it's not the most ideal situation. And even with the combo classes that may exist, we are providing additional resources to those sites and those individual teachers so that they can have more opportunity to be prepared. And that includes, I think, and I may be misspeaking, Steve, but additional planning time, additional staff to support them in offering up the assistance with creation of resources, et cetera. Okay.
Thank you for that response. I think my, my concern is that we are having some consistency in approach across the district. And while I appreciate kind of the localized nature of sites being able to make those decisions, I also feel like they need to be grounded in best practices. And, you know, some recognition that when you do have a combo class size, the class size is going to increase. And when you are making decisions about essentially, you know, teaching subjects to combine classes, you're also creating in some senses a track system. So one set of students in a five, six might be learning English in a certain way, and another class of five, six are learning English in a different way. And so, and, and I'm just concerned about some of those things that we have moved away from and tracking in particular, coming back with the combo classes being used in this way. And so that is the antithesis of equity. And, and I just want to make sure that we're, we're looking at this across the district with some consistency and respecting the, you know, the needs of sites to make certain decisions, but with some guidelines and some grounding and best practices.
Now, I would just like to echo what Professor Don Cruz said, basically, to know that.
Other questions, comments from the board? Trustee Fong.
I'd like to move approval of the Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts LCAP.
Do you have a second? Did you public comment? Okay, we have a motion from Trustee Fong. We have a second from Trustee De La Cruz.
President Sheffield, I believe we still need to go to public comment.
My bad. Okay, let's go to public comment.
If there are any members of the public on Zoom who would like to comment on item E6, approval of Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts LCAP, please raise your virtual hand at this time. And our first speaker is Jess. Jess, could you please state your full name for the record?
My name is Jess Lee-How. I'm a parent at the art school. And I just, I wanted to make a comment that we were shown a budget last week of like $29,000 to go to our English language development. And this week, it says $35,000 and some odd dollars. And that's like 50% of our budget for a teacher. And so you're asking the entire fourth and fifth grade classes to sacrifice their needs for a total of 12 students who utilize this benefit. And a Spanish-speaking mother stepped forward last week and made a suggestion that perhaps we steal from that budget and put it towards teachers. Let the advisory board fundraise, come up with different ways. And I just feel it's irresponsible to vote on a budget when we don't even have the proper amount of teachers. And these have not been thoroughly looked at. You're still in the research stage. And so that's just like a common, I believe, understanding or agreement amongst our own community that we wish that you guys wouldn't be voting on a budget when we don't even have the grounds to make a decision, nor the transparency, nor the available funding for a teacher that is already in existence in our school. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Jess. And our next speaker is Katie and Justin Mar.
Hello again. I wanted to apologize, I didn't realize that I was violating the Brown Act and asking for a response earlier. So apologies, but I did want to say thank you for, for all of you for acknowledging the concerns that all of us parents have brought forward from the Arts Charter tonight. Thank you very much. I understand it's law that you need to put this to a budget vote and that these numbers are not locked in. I would just like to say, from a passionate parent point of view, that the kids that are going to be affected, particularly, I know at the Arts Charter, the fourth and fifth graders, you know, their entire school career has been affected by the craziness going on over the last five years. It's not, I understand that every student has been going through this, but these kids in particular, it's been their entire school career. When they were in preschool and kindergarten, the Tubbs fire hit. When they were in kindergarten and first grade, they had a somewhat normal year. When they were in first and second grade is when COVID hit. When they were in second and third grade, it was distance learning. Now we're here and we're getting back to a place of normalcy. The kids, as Lonnie, we so eloquently pointed out earlier, they're still mentally affected by the last five years that they've gone through. Now they're getting back to a place of normalcy and we're being told that their next school year could be disrupted once again with large class sizes and teachers not being able to give them the attention that they, they so deserve, especially based on, on how school has been from them since preschool to now. So that, that's just an impassioned parent comment toward this, you know, motion to possibly have a combo class and increase class sizes for fourth and fifth at Arts Charter to, between, you know, 32 and 34. I understand we need to be consistent across the entire school system for Santa Rosa City Schools that all schools need to consider. I just wanted to say that as a place from a motion.
Thank you, Katie and Justin. And there are no other hands raised at this time.
All right, bring it back to the board. Before, we had a motion and second, but we will entertain a question from Trustee Flores.
Superintendent Trunell, if you could clarify, and we're not supposed to answer any sort of the questions that are put forth in public comments, but I just want to make sure that we're clear as to funding sources when funding sources are allocated for English language development. And.
Oh, sorry, I might, you overrode.
Those are what we used to call categorical funding before. So could you explain, so we're not misinforming people as to how that works? So that way, I think folks at home can, can find out how those budget items are allocated. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to hand it over to Joel. I just do want to mention that in the discussion regarding serving and supporting English learners, I understand how there could be a perspective that with fewer students, there might be the ability to move some funding around. However, those funds are, exist for a reason. And that is to ensure that we're providing resources for students who are developing English language proficiency. And therefore, it is a priority for us, no matter what school a student is attending. If, Joel, if you could talk specifically about the allocation.
Yes. The Arts Charter School LCAP is budgeted with their supplemental, with their supplemental LCFF funding. And they have identified the extra services they're providing for their students with those supplemental concentration, supplemental funding. Those are not the extent of all their services. They do have other services in the, that are funded with base LCFF funding that are not in the LCAP. But these are the identified increased services that they've identified to use their LCF supplemental funding for. And it is staffing. There are, those staff members, in some cases, I believe, are dual-funded, some out of the supplemental and the remainder of that is the out-of-base. Does that answer your question?
Other questions from the board? We have a motion from Trustee Fong, second from Trustee De La Cruz. We are ready for a vote.
Director Bowie. Aye. Director Fong. Director De La Cruz. Director Flores. Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye, motion passes. We are going to pause briefly for translator change.
Thank you, President Sheffield. Mari Bell, if you are present on Zoom, can you please accept the invitation to be promoted to panelist? Thank you, Mari Bell.
You ready?
Almost. We are all set. Thank you.
All right. So we are bringing it back for our last LCAP item or E seven, approval of Santa Rosa French American Charter School LCAP. The board will consider the adoption of Santa Rosa French American Charter School LCAP for 2022, 23 year. Superintendent Trinell, we have Principal Anderson joining us.
Yes, thank you and welcome Principal Anderson for joining us this evening. Board, as has been discussed previously, we presented through public hearing the French American Charter School LCAP. At this time, there are no adjustments to that LCAP and therefore we present it to you tonight for potential action to approve the Santa Rosa French American Charter School LCAP. And we'll entertain any questions and thank you again, Principal Anderson for being here in case there are any.
Board member questions? All right, seeing none, public comment?
If there are any members of the public on Zoom who would like to comment on item E seven, approval of Santa Rosa French American Charter School LCAP, please raise your virtual hand at this time. And there are no hands raised.
Back to the board for further discussion, questions or a motion?
I'd like to move approval of the Santa Rosa French American Charter School LCAP.
Motion was from trustee Fong, seconded from trustee Flores. We are ready for a vote.
Director Bowie.
Aye.
Director Fong. Director Flores.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz. Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye. All right, the motion passes. So thank you all, our principals, Gage, Luther, Anderson. Thank you, Mr. Dantos. Thank you, Mr. Mazzara. Thank you, Superintendent Trinell and your incredible staff, LCAP, John. All right, we are moving on to agenda item E eight. Approval of the reorganization of district level administration to provide more coherent support and services to meet the priorities of Santa Rosa City Schools' mission and vision. The board will consider approval of the reorganization of the district administration to better serve the students, families and the staff of Santa Rosa City Schools presenting this agenda item. Superintendent Trinell, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Board President Sheffield, members of the board, people who are here in person and online. I present to you tonight a reorganization of the district level administrators to provide more coherent support and services to meet the priorities and goals of Santa Rosa City Schools' mission and vision. As you will see in the revised org chart, you will notice some adjustments to some of the titles. So I just want to go through those briefly. So for educational services, the position two years ago was an assistant superintendent of educational services. Last year we did a reorg and adjusted that position to be an associate superintendent of educational services. Actually, it was teaching and learning previously. Educational services now. With that adjustment last year, special education services and student services was moved under the umbrella of educational services. Looking at the impact of the work over the course of my first year as superintendent, it's very clear that in order for us to do some really focused work, I'd like to move the special education services division and department from underneath the umbrella. That position will work directly with me and our staff, allowing educational services to focus on the other elements that are listed here and also give more opportune time and specificity of work to our special education services division. So with that, that would be, that would be a title shift to assistant superintendent of educational services. As I mentioned, under special education services, we're actually removing student services out from under that umbrella and moving that under educational services. So that Mr. Mazzara and team can be fully involved in the business of serving our students with special needs and others, maintaining under that umbrella, our clinical supervision, our school psychologists, our therapists and our nurses. Under technology and information services, this is a position that was introduced last year in June as a part of a reorganization as an assistant superintendent position. During the course of the 21, 22 school year, I made the decision not to fill that position because we had a lot of moving parts, trying to stay focused on schools and COVID, et cetera. The position was budgeted for, but the position was not spent as far as the salary was concerned. So there was actually a cost savings to the district by not spending on that particular salary during 21, 22. The creation of this division formally going into 22, 23 is also a catalyst for additional data conversations that we're preparing to bring forward and have as a part of our regular and ongoing work. You will hear later about the potential for the lead of that division that I'd like to present to the board. But we will be very much engrossed as we grow assessments that we are offering K-12 in the district, being able to make sense of a variety of data and also use that information on a regular basis to make decisions about our program services practices towards our mission, vision and goals. So that's technology and information services. Business services, then the removal of technology and information services from under the umbrella. The position transitions from a deputy superintendent of business services to an associate superintendent of business services, retaining all other elements of the division with the exception of technology and information services. Human resources is fairly unchanged and will continue to do their work under the umbrellas that are named for classified, certificated recruitment and substitute services. And of course, as we know, with the number of hires that we need to do over the course of the next couple of months, we will definitely need to be focusing on increase, increasing our hiring efforts, our recruitment efforts and our, and the ability for us to retain individuals in our district. Lastly, I am listing the communications coordinator and public information officer as another component. Really recognizing this role as a member of executive leadership and senior cabinet so that the individual that we would like to bring forward to you tonight for hire is a part of, on a regular basis, the conversations about business of the district so that that person is informed and also can assist with understanding all of the moving parts as it relates to communications and public information officer work. That rounds out the overall biggest moves. Some other shifts that you will notice is that we had previously a K-12 education, executive director, excuse me, in educational services. And then also an executive director for assessment equity professional learning. That has shifted in this org chart to the executive director of TK to six education and executive director of seven through 12 education. Respectively speaking, the people in the former roles retain this title and their current positions with the new titles, if you will. Being super focused on mathematics around how we build English language proficiency, how we continue to integrate CTE into the work that we do, work around dual language immersion, A through G, and then how we build in, for example, additional pre-A through G measures into our elementary and middle school, just to name a few. There's a lot of work to be done and this restructuring allows for a refocus. I also wanted to note that I added Indian education. It has been a silent partner as far as an org chart is concerned, yet a very instrumental piece to how we serve our students. And so I wanted to recognize this particular office and Elizabeth Billy and team and the work that we are doing. And with that, I hand it out. One more thing that I want to mention because I know that there may be questions about cost savings, quote unquote. So as I mentioned, and you'll look, if you look at the attachment, you will see the shifts in salary from current year, which is 21, 22, to the future year of 22, 23. Technically speaking, it looks like we have a cost savings in about $20,000. I understand that there could be some question to that since we technically did not spend the salary of the assistant superintendent of technology and information services during 21, 22, that it will be an increase to spending for 22, 23. Respectively speaking, in the budget, on the budget side of things, it still is a savings of $20,000. And with that, I'll hand it back to you, President Sheffield.
Thank you, Superintendent Trinell. Board members, do we have questions? Trustee Flores?
So looking at the organizational chart, I know it's a draft. I can't find the communications coordinator and public information in that chart. Is that because it's not here? Oh, okay. I see that. Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Yes, trustee De La Cruz.
I really appreciate the kind of breaking out TK through six and seven through 12. I am concerned about kind of the removal of the focus on equity and assessment. I understand that they will be integrated, but I'm wondering also how that fits in with the MTSS coordinator and that question around evaluation of MTSS supports to make sure that we're looking at what is available at each site, make sure that those supports are grounded in evidence-based practices. So just wanting to hear a little bit more about how that's pulling apart TK and six and seven through 12.
Yes, thank you for the question. So as you can see from the org chart, I'm going to try to make it bigger so I can look at it more closely. You'll see that there's really some sharing across those two positions of work that's really going to take that cross collaboration and integration. So for example, the BAPATOSA and then also on the other side, the MATTOSA, just putting apples to apples, if you will, a little bit. So there's going to be cross collaboration amongst the team to ensure that it's not just one-sided or focused on just one set of grade levels. But will really be a part of the work of myself and the new assistant superintendent to be very deliberate about what we mean when we say, what does equity look like in this work? To really call it out and spell that out and that what we are moving forward and explaining work, that we actually make those connections at the beginning so that it's very clear in how we are doing that. So there won't be anything dropping off the plate, if you will. It's just going to become a part of what we do on a regular basis and not a side a list of just topics or tasks, but everything that we do within and not just in educational services, but across all of our services.
And was around the kind of ED of TK through six, is that the person who's also going to be responsible for rolling out the expanded TK pursuant to new legislation?
Yes, the short answer is yes, along with the director of elementary. However, we can't do this work in a vacuum. So what we have to actually look at is the end in mind. So starting with our first cohort of students, what is our program plan for that child, all the way seeing them through graduation and 12th grade? And so I think that's some forward thinking and forward visioning that we have to do so that we can tell the story of what the experience is in Santa Rosa City Schools.
Other questions from the board? All right, this is an action item. We'll go to public comment.
If there are any members of the public on Zoom who would like to comment on item E eight, approval of the reorganization of district level administration to provide more coherent support and services to meet the priorities of Santa Rosa City Schools' mission and vision, please raise your virtual hand at this time. And there are no hands raised.
All right, bringing it back to the board for further discussion, questions or a motion? We have trustee Fong.
I will say this and then I'm going to make a motion. I want to commend you, Superintendent Trinell. You have had a very tough year and you came in, you hit the ground running and you had to navigate all the moving parts, of course, during pandemic. And you made this, you came into a brand new org chart. I think we changed it just right before you got here. And so as you did your work this year and you took a look at how things worked in the district, you have made it your own. You have, you know, this looks very silent, of course, but it's just an art board chart. And I know that that's not how you work. So I know that there will be a lot of cross stuff and, you know, with equity grounding everything. So we're going to be expecting that, but I know that's where you're headed. So I just want to appreciate you and support you in this new, new way you want to work with your folks. And we're looking forward to that kind of very powerful year. And I would like to make a motion to, to approve the reorganization of district level administration.
Move by, motion was by trustee Fong. We have a question from trustee Flores in a second.
Yeah, sorry. Slow down here. So who is going to be the director for TK through eight for charter schools?
Same person.
Same person. Okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion from trustee Fong, second from trustee Flores. We are ready for a vote.
Director Bowie.
Aye.
Director Fong. Director Flores. Director De La Cruz. Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye, motion passes and congratulations, Superintendent Trinell. I think we are in solid hands. We are going to move on to agenda item E nine, another action item, oral recommendation regarding assistant superintendent of human resources salary and fringe benefits discussion and board vote on assistant superintendent employment agreement. The proposed contract for Michael Shepherd as I'm sorry. Oh. The, the proposed contract for Michael Shepherd as assistant superintendent of human resources is being presented to the board for approval. Presenting the agenda item is Superintendent Trinell.
Thank you, Board President Sheffield, members of the board, those in person and online. I'm here to present the oral reading of the assistant superintendent of human resources contract. There are a few things that I want to share in between that. First, Mr. Shepherd served as assistant superintendent of HR during the 21, 22 school year. The oral reading is the assistant superintendent's contract states that the assistant superintendent's salary for the 22, 23 fiscal year will be $172,706. The 20, 22, 20, 23 work year for the assistant superintendent shall be 225 days. The contract provides the assistant superintendent with the same access to health, dental and vision benefits as other management employees. Finally, the contract provides for $3,600 as annual reimbursement for automobile related expenses. Assistant Superintendent Shepherd has led efforts to increase our hiring potential by increasing substitute pay, hosting hiring fairs, implementing regular onboarding meetings of new hires and streamlining internal hiring processes. of new hires, and streamlining internal hiring processes. He has taken time to visit school sites and meet with administrators, which is something that is rare for someone in his position, and also speaks to his character and dedication to ensuring that HR practices are refined to identify needs. In addition, he has served as chief negotiator for the district and has supported the ushering of multiple agreements with our labor partners. Assistant Superintendent Shepard is a valued member of the superintendent's cabinet, and I ask for the board's consideration in the approval of this contract. With that, I will hand it back to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Trunell. Board member questions? Yes, trustee Flores.
And I already had this discussion with our Assistant Superintendent, Superintendent Trunell. Salut. You know, it would be helpful for us to know, this is not a question, this is more like a statement here. It will be helpful for us to know that there was, there wasn't any sort of changes from the previous contract. Because when I first read this, I was like, okay, is this, we are approving a salary increase? Are we approving any sort of changes? So, and I know this will go with the same sort of other actions that we have after this. So just for future reference, I liked that in the summary, thank you.
All right, other board members, do we have questions? Go to public comment. No blue cards in the house, so we will go to our Zoom community.
If there are any members of the public on Zoom who would like to comment on item E9, Oral Recommendation Regarding Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources' Salary-Infringed Benefits Discussion and Board Vote on Assistant Superintendent Employment Agreement, please raise your virtual hand at this time. And there are no hands raised.
All right, bringing it back to the board for further discussion, questions or a motion, trustee Fong.
I'm moving that we accept the oral recommendation regarding Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources' Salary-Infringed Benefits.
Moved by trustee Fong, seconded by trustee Flores. We are ready for a vote.
Director Bowie. Director Fong. Director Flores. Director De La Cruz. Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye, motion passes. Ah, yay. All right, moving on. Yay, Mike. The item E10, another action item, Oral Recommendation Regarding Assistant Superintendent of Technology and Information Services' Salary-Infringed Benefits Discussion and Board Vote on Assistant Superintendent Employment Agreement. Turning it back over to you, Superintendent Trunell.
Thank you, Board President Sheffield, members of the board, and those in our community attending tonight. Mr. Van Dyke currently serves as the Director of Information and Evaluation, and he did this during the 21-22 school year. Tonight, I am recommending that he be named the Assistant Superintendent of Technology and Information Services. I will now read the oral reading. The Assistant Superintendent's contract states that the Assistant Superintendent's salary for the 22-23 fiscal year will be $172,706. The 2022-2023 work year for the Assistant Superintendent shall be 261 days, and that is because this is a classified management position. The contract provides the Assistant Superintendent with the same access to health, dental, and vision benefits as other management employees. Finally, the contract provides for $3,600 as annual reimbursement for automobile-related expenses. I do want to share that Mr. Van Dyke is a dedicated team member, serving SRCS for 18 years as an Assistant Principal, Vice Principal, Principal, and Director. Prior to SRCS, Mr. Van Dyke has served as a teacher and school administrator in the West County District. Rand has spent the majority of his life here in Sonoma County. The skeleton of this position existed before via a Chief Technology Officer in former years. This position was approved last year in 2021 and budgeted for 21-22, and we chose not to fill the position, given so many moving parts that were happening in the school year. Therefore, a one-time savings took place during the 21-22 school year based on the approved positions for 21-22. And with that, I will hand it back to you, President Sheffield.
Thank you for the reading, Superintendent Trunell. Board members, questions? Seeing none, we will go to public comment. We do not have blue cards in the in-house on this. We will go to the, our Zoom audience.
If there are any members of the public on Zoom who would like to comment on item E10, Oral Recommendation Regarding Assistant Superintendent of Technology and Information Services' Salary-Infringed Benefits Discussion and Board Vote on Assistant Superintendent Employment Agreement, please raise your virtual hand at this time. And we have a hand raised by Ayesha Morgan.
Thank you so much. This is so exciting. I am thrilled for the district that Rand will be in this position. I've worked for him for six years, and I couldn't be happier with the prospects of our incredible possibilities with Rand helping us make good use of data, making smart use of processes, and making all the best that we can do for our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. And there are no other hands raised at this time.
All right, bringing it back to the board for further discussion, questions or a motion? Trustee De La Cruz.
I just want to say I'm really excited about this, and thank you, Ms. Morgan, for being as excited. I think it's, it's going to be awesome to have somebody with your background in education and in students and in teaching and learning, also really digging down deep into the data. This is, it just feels like such a meaningful step forward for our district to really know what's working and who it's working for. So yay, and adelante.
Trustee Fong.
I would just add that we are data hungry, and we also like data that people can understand. So it just gives the facts, you know, the gist of it, because parents also understand the data, and the community does too. So let's let those facts speak for themselves, and Rand, I think you're going to do a great job. So I second that motion. I think, I would like to move approval of the oral recommendation.
All right, moved by trustee Fong, seconded by trustee De La Cruz. We are ready for a vote.
Director Bowie. Director Fong. Director De La Cruz. Director Flores. Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye, motion passes. Congratulations, Rand, and now you have to suffer us. We are moving on to agenda item E11, Oral Recommendation Regarding Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services' Salary-Infringed Benefits Discussion and Board Vote on Assistant Superintendent Employment Agreement. Turning it back over to you, Superintendent Trunell.
Thank you, Board President Sheffield, members of the board and community that is joining us tonight. I bring forward a recommendation for Dr. Roderick Castro to be named the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services for Santa Rosa City Schools. I will now read the oral reading. The Assistant Superintendent contract states that the Assistant Superintendent's salary for the 22-23 school year will be $172,706. The 2022-2023 work year for the Assistant Superintendent shall be 225 days. The contract provides the Assistant Superintendent with the same access to health, dental, and vision benefits as other management employees. Finally, the contract provides for $3,600 as annual reimbursement for automobile-related expenses. I would like to share that Dr. Castro is coming to us from San Francisco Unified, where he has served for several years as a director under the Division of Curriculum and Instruction. In previous roles, he has served as a Director of Special Education for San Francisco Unified and roles in the Los Angeles Unified School District as a Coordinator of State and Federal Programs, a school-site administrator, both as a principal and assistant principal, and a classroom teacher. In addition, Dr. Castro serves as an adjunct associate professor for the University of Southern California. With that, I am confident that Dr. Castro brings the necessary depth and breadth of what SRCS needs to serve every student, and I fully recommend that the board consider this contract, and I hand it back to you.
Thank you for the reading. Board members, questions? Nope, okay, we will go to the public.
If there are any members of the public on Zoom who would like to comment on item E11, Oral Recommendation Regarding Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services' Salary-Infringed Benefits Discussion and Board Vote on Assistant Superintendent Employment Agreement, please raise your virtual hand at this time. And there are no hands raised.
All right, we will bring it back to the board for further discussion, questions or a motion? Trustee Fong.
Dr. Castro, thank you for joining us, not only tonight, but for the future. And we are really looking forward to your leadership. We're looking forward to the kind of work that we want to do as a district under Superintendent Trunell. So you've got a big plate, and we welcome your, your work and how you're going to work with all the people who are in your department, all of our staff, our principals. We have big things in terms of equity and inclusion. Thank you. And I'd like to move.
Wait, another question or comment from trustee?
I'm going to move this, and everyone's going to talk.
Okay.
Well, I just want to say also, I just want to reiterate what trustee Fong said. I just want to say thank you for being here. Thank you for choosing Santa Rosa City Schools as your next phase in your life. I know going from LA Unified to San Francisco to Santa Rosa, it's quite a shift, and hopefully you'll like the country living here in Sonoma County. And we hope to keep you here for a really, really long time, and we were really impressed with your resume. And I just want to second that motion.
All right, we have a motion from trustee Fong, a second from trustee Flores. Losing my voice. We are ready for a vote.
Director Bowie.
Aye.
Director Fong.
Before I say, I just want to say, this is not to not welcome back our other Assistant Superintendents and our new Assistant Superintendents. So you are not chopped liver. Aye.
Director Flores. Director De La Cruz. Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye, motion passes. Congratulations and welcome, Dr. Castro. We are moving on to agenda item E12, another action item, Approval of Governing Board of Elections, November 2022. The board will consider adoption of the specification of the Election Order Resolution 2021-2264 in preparation for the November 8, 2022 election.
So.
This is the action item.
Yeah, so thank you, Board President Sheffield, members of the board and community. Last time we did a resolution, that was to acknowledge the movement forward to this next step. And so with that, this is the county's requirement for the board to recognize their legal forms, if you will, that there are three positions that will be sunsetting in December of this year, and therefore, an election will need to be conducted, which the board has approved to move forward. This is now recognizing that these positions will be potentially opened by petition for those who are interested to be candidates, with deadlines having been addressed at our last meeting. And with that, I bring it back to the board for discussion.
Board member questions, trustee Flores.
So I was trying to do some research, and this wouldn't go back further than two years. I was under the impression that the district paid for the candidate's statement of qualifications. But the district, but according to this, it says the candidate pays for it. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? All right, we will go to the public, public comment. No blue cards in the house, so we are ready for our Zoom audience.
If there are any members of the public on Zoom who would like to comment on item E12, Approval of Governing Board Elections, November 2022, please raise your virtual hand at this time. And there are no hands raised.
Okay. We will bring it back to the board for discussion, questions, motion? Yes.
If I may. I remember not paying for this. I believe the district paid for that. I never submitted a reimbursement form for this, and I remember having a meeting with the previous superintendent, Kedmore, about this, and she specifically mentioned that the district would pay for this. So I just want to make sure that we amend this to say that, yeah, the district will pay for it, not the candidate. Because as I'm reading through it, I don't see anywhere in here that it says that it'll be reimbursable.
I don't recall reimbursement either. I think that it was covered, cost was covered. So.
It was covered.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So we will make sure that we make adjustments to the language on this and make it very clear that the costs are covered, covered upfront by the district.
And just that, historically, initially, the district started paying just for the English version. I think the last election, the district covered both English and Spanish.
That's true. And as far as I know, going back to 2016, when I ran, it was paid for both English and Spanish by the district. Okay, so we will note the need for a language change.
Well, clarification, if we need to vote on this now, because this is what we have to tell the registrar, we need to make that amendment now, I think. Amendment to present it.
Need to announce an amendment.
What is the?
All right, so I like to amend this to include that the district is responsible for cost incurred in publishing a statement of qualifications in such a statement, if such a statement is desired.
Okay, so we have a proposed.
I lost audio. I can't hear anybody, if anybody's talking. I hear, I hear now.
Okay, so just the resolution, right? That's what we're amending, is the resolution. And it's basically just taking the tick box, the X, and moving it from candidate to district.
To district is responsible for. Okay, so we're making a motion on the amendment?
I second.
Okay, so we have a motion for the amendment from trustee Flores, seconded from trustee De La Cruz. We are ready for a vote.
Director Bowie.
Aye.
Just one clarification, we're voting on the amendment.
On a menu? Can you hear us, Omar? Okay.
Yes.
Director Flores. Director De La Cruz. Director Fong. Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, we are through our action items.
Wait, point of clarification. So I thought we were just voting on the amendment, now we got to vote on the motion.
I'm sorry, you are correct. Okay, now, would you like to make a motion, Mr. Medina?
I think it wouldn't be proper for me.
Would we, would we, board members have a motion? Trustee Fong.
I make to approve the governing board elections, November 22, within them and as approved. I move to approve the Governing Board Elections November 22 within amendment as approved.
So we have a motion. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay. Moved by Trustee Fong, seconded by Trustee De La Cruz.
Director Bowie. Director Fong. Director De La Cruz. Director Flores. Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, we are now moving on to our consent items, our F items. We had a blue card poll for, from Captain Howell in the audience for F5. The approval of contracts. Okay, so do we have a board member to make a motion for approval of other items, consent items tonight?
I move to approve consent items one through four and six through 16.
Okay, we have a motion from Trustee Flores for agenda items one through four, six through 16, seconded by Trustee De La Cruz. We're ready for a vote.
Director Bowie.
Aye.
Director Flores. Director De La Cruz. Director Fong. Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, we have pulled agenda item F5. I see Catherine Howell, would you like to speak to the item?
Good evening, Catherine Howell, SRTA president. I just wanted to bring your attention to the contracts. I'm not suggesting you not approve this item, but I wanted to point out Simmons University, no cost. SSU Teacher Credential Program, no cost. SSU Student Intern Program, no cost. Pacific Union College, no cost. Chico State University, no cost. These are our student teachers. And in fact, the cost is in thousands of hours of volunteer work essentially done by our teachers in this district as they mentor these student teachers through their student teaching process. Most of them get no stipend, some get $100 for a full school year of being a mentor. And are, putting aside the whole like teachers work for free as interns during this year anyway, our, our teachers in this district are volunteering hundreds on thousands of hours to make these process, to make this practice work. I am encouraging this board to increase these stipends, to create some stipends for the mentors in our district. And I will very briefly mention in North Coast School of Education, there is a stipend associated with the induction mentors, but also very small and not met. In many cases, districts will match what the North Coast School of Education is giving in terms of mentor stipends. This district does not match. So I brought this to your attention just so that you are aware that these are not no-cost programs. These are thousands of work hours being done by your employees, the teachers of this district. Thank you.
Thank you, President Howell. Board, will we? Continue.
I have a question on another contract. This is a contract. This is contract number four. And the contract is to facilitate workshops with Latinx and immigrant slash refugee families on how best to acculturate to the culture of the United States. And I'm just wondering, do we have more information about this curriculum about what it means to teach people how to acculturate to the culture of the United States rather than to facilitate access to systems and to figure out how to request resources? That language is just slightly problematic for me.
Thank you.
And I think, I think I'll add, or a question is, is it tied to anything BICA or is it separate?
I'm not well versed on this particular contract. I do see Edvi Yamas online and perhaps she might be able to give some additional assistance to this item.
She's on her way over as a panelist.
Thank you. We have you on mute. You could unmute yourself.
Thank you, would help if I unmuted myself. Hi, my apologies, I'm on my phone. I was actually listening and making dinner, something that doesn't happen that rarely, so. Would you mind, please, just summarizing the questions?
I'm happy to do that, thank you. Thank you for being so accessible to us and I hope we don't mess up your dinner. So my question is around kind of what the, what the curriculum is and why the term acculturation to the culture here is being used rather than teaching parents and kids how to access resources, how to request resources, how to learn their rights? You know, as, as students and families in our education systems, rather than this idea of acculturation as needing to be necessary to be respected and seen and served by our systems, right? So I think that that's kind of the way that I see this is that there shouldn't be a requirement to acculturate, to change your culture. That responsibility is actually on the system and on the district for us to see and love and hold and loving concern and care and understand people who come to us exactly how they are. So I just, I would love to understand a little bit more about what that curriculum actually is made up of and if there's a possibility for us to change that language. Because there's something about a sense of belonging, right? That we are working to create that acculturation doesn't necessarily capture.
Right, and so this is verbiage that we actually worked in conjunction with our publisher. And it's been a few years that we've been looking at what is that? Prior to this, there's never been an actual curriculum for our students. And so this is the first time that we're bringing forth a curriculum. And that is part of the conversations we've been having internally with the department chairs in terms of this curriculum does not cover all aspects of the work that's going to be happening in the class. Yet it does fulfill a good portion of the world language standards. And so using that really as like a driving force for their work, my apologies, my dog decided to bark. For the driving source, force, understanding that a lot of work has to happen in the classroom to be able to not feel like, also, not feel like it has to be a sense of acculturation, but it is understanding heritage speakers and also the culture we come from, the, the beauty, I guess, of a student who is either a heritage speaker or a native Spanish speaker receiving Spanish for Spanish speakers within the high school experience. Does that help? And I definitely understand that it is part of us as a system and really informing our staff and our teachers and also providing them professional development and support to be able to understand just that the students that we are serving now, that are Spanish for Spanish speaker students, come with a wealth of knowledge. As you have seen, that there's been a lot of work that we've been working on with return, with, in terms of our students. Look at them as asset base, right? They're coming with a lot of knowledge. And so how are we taking all of that and also having a curriculum that provides history that is not really what they have been accustomed to in the past?
So, Trustee De La Cruz, it sounds like you had also some concerns around the verbiage, around the use. And maybe that's something that we can discuss. We can have a greater conversation on this. I don't know if that will satisfy sort of what it is that you're getting at. I think I know where you're coming from. I agree with you completely. I'm hoping that maybe we can have more discussion on that. So I want to, I want to continue on with the agenda item. We did poll agenda item E5. Trustee Flores had additional question, but I want to make sure that we're satisfying, getting, getting response for you, Trustee De La Cruz.
Yes, absolutely. And that helps me a lot, Director Yamas. I always appreciate your, your quick recognition that we are, should and are doing our best to work in that asset frame rather than operating in a deficit or requiring people to change themselves in order to be seen and accepted by our systems. So that, that's my concern with the language. And I think if I were to approve this contract tonight, I would like to strike the acculturation reference and just talk more about providing resources and training to parents and students around services in our district as well as teaching and sharing with them their educational rights under US law and California law rather than requiring them to change in some way.
Trustee Flores and then Trustee Medina.
Just to be clear. There isn't any curriculum here. We're approving the, the resources and training that Rafael Vasquez from SRJC will do in terms of options for after high school, how to pay for college, dangerous technology with children, finance, basic finances for immigrant families. I just want to make sure, because there isn't any information here about adopting curriculum. So I just want to make, make that clear, right? And I concur with the Director De La Cruz that I think we should strike that. I mean, I've seen Rafael present before and he, he does not acculturate in any way. So that, so that's something that we definitely need to change here. But I just want to make sure that we're, we're talking about apples to apples here, there's no adoption of curriculum under this contract.
And my apologies, this is, the sound is not the best this evening. So this was a specific recommend, request from a number of parents that participate in D-LAC that have attended Mr. Vasquez Guzman's trainings in the past and had been requesting this. The first request came to us in December. And so we've been working with him on this proposal in this contract in terms of how to best share this information with a broader group of parents that was above and beyond just those few that had requested it in D-LAC. And so I definitely, with my apologies, because I do have the other item on the Spanish for Spanish speaker textbooks. But he, that is something that I believe a big conversation is, that he brings is there is no need for acculturation in terms of, that is normally what many of, many students or of Latino descent or Latinistic set sort of are asked to do. And he's really coming again from the asset base to inform our parents in terms of there is no need for acculturation because they bring a wealth of experience and knowledge and he wants to be able to provide those tools. So for this, for the parents to be able to better understand their students.
Trustee Medina.
Thank you. Yeah, definitely that word acculturation has a very adverse connotation for me. But the question that I asked was, is this somehow tied? It sounds like maybe not, based on what you said, if it was like somehow tied to BICA? And also I saw that the contract dates are June and July. So I'm wondering like, is there a lot of, it says eight workshops, so is that happening like, like all in a really short period? What's the venue, how are parents being engaged? Just out of curiosity, so if you want to like refer parents or how could parents, I'm going to bolt participating in this? Or how is this being communicated to parents? Yeah.
So this, so this came, like I said, from a number of parents in the D-LAC Executive Committee and just in the D-LAC Committee. And it is being offered, we've been, he had proposed it early on. We've been working on this in terms of what does this really look like? Would it be virtual? Would it be in person? He really wanted it to be in person and the parents were also requesting this. So the first round of parents that were invited to attend came from D-LAC. And then it was word of mouth from the D-LAC Committee members inviting other parents. So it's taking place Fridays from six to eight at Santa Rosa High School. They, Mr. Vasquez Guzman went ahead and requested facilities or facilities request through our district so that he could have it in a central location. And that worked best for our parents to have it at San Rosa High School. So there are three dates in June that this is happening. And it did, though it's coming today, it did the first class that they really wanted to maximize the summertime for parents. And the first class was held on June 10th. So it will be these, from the 10th to 17th. And the 20, gosh, what are we, coming up on Friday? The 24th and then the five Fridays in July for a total of eight workshops that he will be providing. And so far, the last count that we had, we had close to 20 parents that were attending these workshops. And so this is not specifically connected to BICA, but it is with regards to parent engagement and a request specifically from our D-LAC Executive Committee.
I think the only final thing that I would ask is if, maybe might not be possible for, as this came for some, but if maybe like the future reports to how much parent involvement was there, how many parents were in case? And maybe some feedback from parents on it, if that could be brought up, I think that would be good.
Okay, other questions, board? Thank you so much, Director Yamas. Get back to dinner. Thank you. Now, we had polled agenda item E5. I mean, sorry, F5. So we're seeking a motion to approve the consent item. Board members? Five? Okay, so we have a motion from Trustee De La Cruz, second from Trustee Flores. We are ready for a vote.
Director Bowie.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz. Director Flores. Director Fong. Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye, motion passes. All right, we are moving on to our G items, approval of minutes. G1, approval of minutes of the regular board meeting held on June 8, 2022. Seeking a motion. Moved by Trustee Flores, seconded by Trustee Fong, ready for a vote.
Director Bowie. Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Fong. Director De La Cruz. Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, H items, board member request for information. Any request for information, board members? We have Trustee Fong.
I have two pretty large requests, so not next meeting, but sometime in this next year, maybe. How might we look at a different way to leverage our teachers' expertise in grade levels? Address the siloing of teachers in their grade levels, address declining enrollment? And save dollars by looking at our neighborhood elementary schools? So as we're looking at the concerns of parents for combo classes and we're looking at maybe elementary schools that are in our district that are very in close proximity to one another, how can we look differently at how we put kids in school? Where we put, put kids in school, still in their general neighborhood? And maybe have not one fourth grade at one school, another fourth grade at another school, but maybe combine it or not two and two, but combine it. It's kind of the Windsor model where they're doing. And so when we're looking at declining enrollment and we have smaller and smaller class sizes and we're looking at combos. and we're looking at combos as, as our go-to, how can we do things a little differently? Kind of, it's a big study. It's a big study. And so the second thing I'm asking for is also quite, quite large and it's nothing that you aren't prepared to do, but just not right now. I'm really looking for a comprehensive report. Oh, gosh, Dr. Castro left, too bad. Maybe it's good, okay. So I'm looking at comprehensive report on how we are serving our students as they matriculate through the grade levels through graduation and possibly post-high school. And this includes data from the truth besides credit, credit and grade data. It also includes how we're using our credit recovery programs. It includes how we're serving students who are seeking success at Ridgway and what's happening to those kids. I know that Ridgway has, they're really embarking on some different ways to do school and they're, they're working on it. I understand that. So that's a kind of a vague request, but I'm really looking to see how our kids are doing. What kind of data you can bring to us to show us how our kids are doing and how we're using our dollars and how we're making our decisions. It's not going to be a definitive report. It'll always be changing. But I do have some grave concerns about how we are serving our kiddos differently. And not just, you know, I hear directors talking about how they're doing things. I hear the coordinators how they're doing things. And, you know, I want to get down to the, you know, the granular level of what's happening in classrooms and how we can make it more powerful experience for teachers as well to collaborate, to share and help them hone their craft as well.
Thank you, trustee Fong. Other board members request for information? Trustee De La Cruz.
I'm just hoping to follow up on some great conversations that we've had about ELAC, D-LAC and Indian Ed. And making sure that we as a board and as a district as a whole are set up to return powerfully in the fall with some clear expectations and structure and schedules so that we can start sharing that information out with our communities in preparation for next year.
Thank you, trustee De La Cruz. And trustee Flores.
Took all my notes here. I like to know more about how San Francisco Schools can participate at the community school grants. I think I put this up last time. Also, an update on the big picture learning at Ridgway. Okay. And, you know, I like to see how we can address the teacher shortage and councilman shortage by considering stipends for student teachers and counseling interns in the future. I like to see if we can have any information or data on that, if, to see if that's feasible. Thank you.
All right, last call. Board members, request for information? All right, we're moving on. I information items listed in the agenda packet. And before we adjourn, Superintendent Trinell, do you have any last announcements?
Thank you for a productive meeting. Thank you for everyone who's still with us. It's been an interesting and amazing year, all in one. President Howell shared some of those things that we've experienced this year. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to ease on some of certain mitigations in order to get back to focusing really on students and funneling our resources and pouring them into our students and our families. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Superintendent Trinell. And with that, meetings adjourned. Good night, everyone.